Okay, as I said at the beginning of the committee meeting, we have the agenda tonight. We talked about 45 minutes approximately about the minimum housing code proposed changes at the committee meeting, and we do not take any motion per se. We have the ordinance on the agenda for consideration tonight. And I know a question was raised, what would happen? We have a moratorium until middle of next month, I believe. Questions would ask, what if we didn't do it tonight? What would happen? Would the moratorium run out or extend it? Either way, it would be two things. And a couple of councilors asked that question, what would happen if we didn't take action tonight? It does require, an ordinance requires three readings, so no matter what we approve the first reading tonight, it will take two additional readings. One thing though is if you, okay, if you passed the first reading tonight and you want to do changes, you couldn't amend it next council meeting. You would have to start over. You could have a first reading of a different ordinance if you amended that. Any other questions? The council has process, a procedure. We do have, it was sent out in a packet, and I think this was mailed, the ordinance was mailed to a number of people that had requested it last week.
It was sent to the task force members and any individuals that had added their name to the list to be notified.
So there were a number of those sent out this past week, at the end of last week. And that's where some of the comments you've announced got back in an email form today and may be ready this weekend. So, this is not a formal public hearing per se. It's a consideration of this ordinance and a consideration. We've had a couple of comments, a couple of questions at the committee meeting. And so at this point, I don't know if the council has any comments or...
Could I ask, if Nick doesn't mind, or Stephanie, share a little bit some of the, I don't really want to call them safeguards, or we recognize that if this ordinance moves on, it's kind of a big shock for a lot of people. There will be things that come up that we're not anticipating, or maybe some that we are anticipating. But there are some safeguards built in that don't necessarily mean once this is passed, it's forever. I mean, what kinds of things are we, are you planning to, if we roll this out? Are there other opportunities?
I think the main safeguard is that what we're suggesting staff-wise is the ordinance be under review throughout the entire time period that's enacted. And that starts by looking at the possibility of making changes if there appear to be issues at six-month time periods. But that's not to say that anytime during the time period, if we find that there's something broken in it, that we shouldn't bring it forward to the council and reevaluate that stage. I think that one of the key things in this ordinance is that there's always the ability for a aggrieved party to appeal to a staff committee as well as to the rental board for relief. And so even without amending the ordinance, there's methods to get relief if they have the ability to prove that the carrying capacity on a given property would support a higher occupancy than what is deemed by the ordinance to be appropriate.
So in six months, there will be a formal review?
Well, before the six-month period appears, I think we would be going back to the task force and describing for them where we might see that there are issues, or maybe we go back and say there aren't any issues. But we will involve the task force in that process, and then the task force would make suggestions as well as staff to the council as to whether or not any amendment should be made.
As you said, two months now, or some serious question came up. The council could raise that question, it could be reviewed before then. And if you're saying the minimum, at least at the end of six months, but before then, if you have concerns, serious ones, or people considering those questions, but...
The reason it's coming out now is to try to get something implemented before the moratorium ends, is that right?
Before it lapses, that's correct.
Thank you.
My thought, and you didn't decide to commit the motion or not, but it might be, I know there was questions before, a couple of you asked, could we defer a table at whatever for two weeks or whatever? So I want to get that, I guess, off the table if that's, somebody still has that concern. Now I think we should vote on that, whether to sit, you know, if we set it for two hours and then table, that would be kind of...
I'd like to hear some of the discussion, if there's any audience members that want to ask questions or, you know. And I don't believe it becomes debatable after a table and a motion.
If a motion is made to table and seconded, that's going to be the right, that's a motion? That's a motion before. So for that, I know we've had a couple people before speak, but are there questions or comments? And just please come up to the mic and name an address, and then whether we have a question or comment, or a combination of the two.
Yes, I'm Laura Smith. I live at 312 Walnut Street, and I just kind of wanted to comment on this ordinance. What I know about it is what I've been following in the Courier. And I guess the reason I feel like I want to comment tonight is, I first moved to Cedar Falls back in 2007 as a college student, and I have since made this place my home. I went on to find a job in this area in my field. I recently became a homeowner, so I'm putting down my roots in this city. But I wouldn't have been able to do that had I not been able to live in a house that was, well, a lot of college students crowded into one place. And the reason why is because that drives the rent down when you're trying to divide that up. And I know that as a young person, first starting on my own, that really helped me out a lot, and it enabled me to stay in this town, and enabled me to establish myself. You guys do have a public university here, and I understand that there are a lot of large houses that have a lot of students crowded in them, and they tend to get rowdy, and they tend to have parties. But then there's also a lot of us who are doing this just because we want to be able to get a decent education without having to break the bank or go into large student loan debt. Another reason why I wanted to speak out about this ordinance is, if you do put a restriction on, these types of restrictions on place, I believe what will happen is, you'll start seeing situations where more people want to rent out of the house, and a landlord might say, "Okay, yeah, I'll put you under the table. You don't have to be on the lease. We're going to just slide this under the radar." And then they get into a situation where there is a problem with the landlord, or there are any legal problems that arise afterwards, well, you weren't on the lease, so you don't have any legal repercussions or any legal action that you can take if something has gone wrong. Thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Is there any? So feel free, yes. Come up and name an address.
Bruce Wingerd, 606 Melanie Lane in Cedar Falls. I simply would like to tag on to something that Frank said here, and I'll use his term, the convoluted ordinance that we see in front of us, I believe personally, and with a lot of other comments that I've had from people over the last few days since this became public, although we don't like the moratorium, and it's had, no question, it's had its consequences on the market here in Cedar Falls in terms of property sales and activity level, many of us feel that what's proposed in front of you is even worse than what the moratorium. Moratorium is obviously a limited period of time, and what's in front of you could become much more harmful for a longer period of time. And so I would encourage you to probably consider to extend the moratorium to some degree and further study this complicated issue that's in front of you. There are too many questions. I've heard several of them this evening, and there's probably others, people that may not feel comfortable coming up in front of you all and making some comments. I've had a tremendous amount of them, I'm overwhelmed actually the last few days. And so I guess I would just propose that, that you think about tabling this issue this evening. And I'd like to see a study group put together, a combination of, not a task force, but maybe a little study group. You guys get together in study groups and you talk about things, not necessarily a formal meeting, but pull in some experts about the relevance of what may happen with this code on market statistics and consequences, and to work with some experts here to answer some of your own questions that you have about this, because I just can't believe that you all would completely understand what's in front of you well enough to pass this on a 45-minute consideration. So I guess I'm going to leave with that and plead with you to consider to table it and pull in some experts and just consider this a little further before you make any rash decisions here. Thank you.
Okay, others? Comments or questions? All right.
I apologize, I know about you before, but I missed when I should. Jeanette Geisler, 5373 Hudson Road. I guess my question to you, because I'm still sitting here trying to decide, did this pertain to single-family units? Because we're saying units, not homes in this. So that takes into case duplexes, because those are two single-family units, according to Steve Moore's letter, which takes into case six-plexes that have six single-family units. And that's my question. And then the one additional thing I wanted to put is, on page six, item number E1, to go above two units on a newly registered single-family unit, you have to be able to show that the plot, or the lot that you have, excuse me, the lot that you have, that the restrictive deeds say that that property could be rented to more than two, that it could be rented to three, four, or five. I've never seen a deed of dedication, or never heard of such a thing, where it's actually projecting that a specific lot is allowed to do that. Now, maybe some new additions, people have written them up though, I'm not aware of that. But in the core of the city, on those old lots, I can't imagine. So that pretty much says everything new starts out as two, and that's my question. Is that a four-plex, you have four two-bedrooms, a six-plex, four two-bedrooms, a duplex, four two-bedrooms? That affects a lot of stuff. And on that one section, it also said that you have to meet that under E1, and it has to be located in MU and RP zoning, that's the top of the next page, which takes again out your R3 and R4 areas from being able to meet that requirement. That's my, I have two main questions there.
Steve, do you have any?
It's only going to apply to single-family and duplexes in any of the city's zoning districts. So it's a single-family and duplex regulation. It's not going to apply to the three-plex, four-plex, six-plex, large complexes, it doesn't apply, these rules do not apply. As it relates to the covenants, it's probably going to be a new area. One of the conversations during the task force, many, many years ago, there were developers that designated certain lots to be duplexes as an example. Well, it could be that some developers are going to designate lots to have certain larger family sizes on some of their properties. And so if those were designated within the restrictive covenants, then they would apply to the ordinance and be able to have higher density. You're not going to see it in much of the current stuff, because they don't have those kind of covenants existing.
One other thing I would like to mention, that provision in the restrictive covenants is only, is only one way you can get up to five occupants. You can apply for a group rental occupancy permit for three, four, or five people. Doesn't have to have anything in the restrictive covenants about it. That's totally separate. She's talking about E1 on page six, and if you look at F on page, starting on page seven, that's what gets new ones up to as many as five if they meet the carrying capacity of the property.
Okay, Nick has a question or comment, but is there any other citizen right now? And obviously not setting it off, is there any other comment right now or questions by any audience? Please just come to the mic.
Carol Deeds, 1802 Orchard Drive. And I ask the same question I asked when the moratorium was being considered as about three single-family rental units. And would that, when I transferred their two-bedroom and one-bedroom, when I transferred those, if we decided to sell, would they still be under that rental units? Could that be transferred to the new owner? And in other words, and also I'd like to agree totally with Bruce Wingerd's suggestion that this be tabled and further study be done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Single-family dwelling units that are sold or transferred that start out at four could possibly go down to three, or may be able to stay at four, based on the rules. They will not go down to two, even potentially, unless they're brand-new, never been rented before, never rented on the moratorium date. So a single-family dwelling unit, duplex dwelling unit, that had an existing occupancy permit when the moratorium went into effect, if it's sold, it may go from four to three, or it may stay at four.
But at two, there shouldn't be any issue? I believe is what she was asking.
Not even two.
Mark Miller, 2929 Waterbury Drive, Cedar Falls. And I think what council's trying to do tonight, as I understand it, is to try to maintain our neighborhoods, at least not have them continue to go down, because some neighborhoods are deteriorating with some rental issues. And I know we have good landlords in our city that put money back into their properties and they take care of them. But we also have some landlords that are just there for strictly investment purpose, and so they don't put a lot of money back into their property, and that hurts property values. I think there's some homeowners here that are in these neighborhoods that their property values are down significantly from what they would sell, would have been able to sell maybe 15 or 20 years ago. But rentals have moved in, they've been deteriorated, and those properties have affected their property. I think you may hear some comments about that tonight. But I think that's really what is the main focus, is we're trying to see that neighborhoods are protected, that property owners have their, you know, they're protected for their investment in their property. And, you know, it's hard to try to get all this into one basket and make it work for everybody, but it sounds like there are some provisions if you need to appeal, or you want to, you know, make some changes or whatever into your properties. So it's a tough task, but I think it needs to be done, and I think there's a lot of support for that in the city.
Thank you. Hey Nick, you had a question on our family belief, and I'll come back.
Well, I guess I've got a few questions, but I really like the idea of the study group, because I think that we're not really taking into consideration supply restriction and what that does to rental prices. I think that's a real significant concern of our 10,000 or so students probably. There's a great concern about how this could negatively impact the property values of existing rentals, because if you go from four to three to two or what have you, it changes the cash flow characteristics and therefore the income potential of that property. And I think there's maybe a little bit of confusion here, because I don't think that this deals with anything related to property maintenance. I think that's an enforcement issue which we're taking head-on right now through our code enforcement initiative.
It's not just rentals, it's homeowners that...
And homeowners, yeah. Correct. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that we're really talking about occupancy here and a few other, like, paving of driveways and that sort of thing, so.
Do I ask the question, or make the statement again about legal issues? Do we have a chance? Okay.
I guess I focus this to Mr. Moore, since you're the most knowledgeable in this area. There's an Iowa Supreme Court case, City of Flue Lake versus Kramer, that specifically spells out that property records travel with the land and are not extinguished at a transfer or purchase. Yet this language in this ordinance is saying in numerous places that it's subject to various criteria. But there's several references to the law of municipal corporations, there's a zoning and planning guideline here that specifically states, like I said, that property rights go with the land, and it's a pretty well-recognized legal concept. So how can that not, how can that be ignored?
Well, first of all, I'm not familiar with Clear Lake against Kramer. That was not a case that I studied. But what I can tell you is the case of ARPA against the City of Ames, approved production in occupancy levels from four persons, four unrelated persons, to three unrelated persons. And that was upheld on constitutional grounds by the Iowa Supreme Court in 2007.
Okay, I believe that was an argument of due process and equal protection was the argument in there.
Right.
That's a different scenario here.
Well, this may have to do with uses or non-complaining uses of property under the zoning code. I haven't read Clear Lake against Kramer, but if it does, this regulation is not based on zoning, this is based on occupancy limits of rental properties. So that would be a distinguishing characteristic between this case and the one you are apparently citing.
Occupancy is a use of the property.
Occupancy level relates to health, safety, welfare, comfort, convenience, public necessity, all the criteria that a council should look at, a legislative body should look at in determining the safety and wealth of its citizens.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody hasn't spoken yet, I just want to make sure we don't have...
Well, there were people who spoke twice, so I guess...
Okay, I'm trying to, yeah. I'll quickly go up. Doesn't mean I can say it.
Hi, my name is Tony Reed, I live at 1020 Franklin Street in Cedar Falls. First of all, I want to say I've come up to speak in favor of this ordinance. I think some talk about a study group, but there has been a task force that, as you well know, has examined this for close to a year, and then we've had six months of the moratorium to think about it, gather input from many partners, so I think that there's been ample opportunity to study the issue, and I urge that you vote yes for it. Cedar Falls is a really unique town. I was trying to think, it's about 25 blocks from the river out to university, and maybe 15 blocks from CFU out to Hudson Road. That's a heck of a lot of just plain original housing stock, and most of it is very well-maintained and mixed for such a beautiful city, and it's, I think we sometimes forget what a unique asset we have in that wonderful collection. I go to my hometown, Columbia, Missouri, and there's very few, very few towns that are, have that original amount of housing stock, and so we should be proud of that and take all the steps needed to preserve and protect that. But there's an economic value to that, too. And the economic value is that because of this large neighborhood that's in good financial condition, we have a prosperous downtown, which is healthy for the entire city. We've all been in cities where there is really not an existing downtown anymore, it's largely vacant buildings. So it is for the good financial health of our entire community, not just those who live in the Serge's Falls area, that we maintain the housing stock and we maintain this great central neighborhood that we all love to come and visit during the Serge's Falls festival. I've had my own share of experiences with renters, some of them have been excellent, many of them have been mediocre, and then there are the ones who wake me up at 2:00 in the morning, they're shouting F-bombs, and even in the afternoon with my children, later my grandchildren, they're shouting F-bombs and they're throwing beer cans around. And this is not the kind of neighborhood that I want to be able to raise families in. There's a public school in the neighborhood, and children walk into school, and I think we need to do what we can to make it an attractive living environment for all those children. For myself, some of you who've been on the council for some time know that I struggled with a house immediately next to mine for 18 years. It was rotting, and eventually, I tip my hat to you that you took action and tore that house down. But think back to 1995, when I first purchased that house. That house next to me was in great condition, and it was allowed to sit empty and rot for 18 years. It would have made a great starter home, the young lady over here has spoken about that, and that's an important thing, that we have places that people can use for starter homes, and we've got this great collection of housing stock for starter homes. But it sat empty for 18 years, largely because there was a loophole in the law that says because this is unoccupied, we can't go in and take action. And I spoke a number of times to code enforcement officers over the years, and they said, "Well, we can't do anything because there's nobody living in it." So I'm grateful that the council has resolved, and as Nick said, that you're going to take much more seriously the job of code enforcement and tighten that up. But as a result of those 18 years when we didn't do that, we lost a perfectly good house. And I know there's lots of other houses around the town that rotted and fell down simply because we did not take that code enforcement seriously. So kudos to you for adding more muscle to code enforcement. About six months ago, the Overland Park Neighborhood Association did a little survey of its members. Seventy-six percent of the members said yes, they supported the moratorium and the kind of action that you were looking at in your ordinance tonight. Of the 24% who voted yes, almost everybody commented online, yes or no, explaining their vote. There wasn't anybody who said, "Well, I support the rights of landowners to have trashy property." You know, they had some other explanations, but nobody supported letting things just fall down. So we've heard some comments tonight about property rights and people rightly being concerned that those might be entrenched, but I simply want to point out that there is an equally important American value, and that is expressed in the adage, you know, you have the right to swing your arm around as much as you want until you come to another man's nose. And I think when people are throwing beer cans out in the yard, and people are throwing F-bombs out, and my children are hearing it, I think my nose has just been hit. So I think the answer is for us to have an ordinance that respects everybody's rights so that we can all be good neighbors, and put into code, the code that will enforce that and allow us to be good neighbors to each other. Thank you very much.
To Dr. Kramer, Thomas Close.
Mary Brammer, 1408 West 18th Street. In years past, you know, I came before you a lot of times talking about the College Hill neighborhood, and how we were desperately trying to stabilize the neighborhood. A year ago, when this process started, I decided that I would just stay on the sidelines and reserve my comment until this came to a completion. The process has been thorough. I attended task force committees and thought they were trying to look at this from all points of view, planning and zoning, city staff, everybody. I think this shows that this community is trying to accommodate a lot of people, as many other communities haven't done. So I compliment all the people, the myriad of people on all levels who have participated on this. I agree that the untapped people here are the people that have had to leave a community that they've lived in for years and loved and raised their children in because of what's going on around them. And the other people who are finding that they can't sell their home, and they've lost value in a home that they've maybe owned for over 20 years because what's going on around them. I also want to compliment code enforcement. As was said, there are many people who have contacted them and said that in the last six months, there's been a huge improvement of what's going on. I think it complements the city when you can say that over 95% of the people that are contacted say, "I'll be glad to take care of that," because those are the kind of people we want in Cedar Falls, and we should be proud of that. Code enforcement can only do so much. What we're talking about is carrying capacity, and when you put too many people on a small lot, what you're actually doing is generating more code enforcement problems. You have parking problems, you have noise problems, you have trash problems. So what this city is trying to do is to accommodate these smaller lots, these smaller homes, and make them appropriate. And I want to congratulate everybody for the effort that they've put in for this. And you seem to have accomplished it without me participating at all.
Kishmet, 7844 Big Woods Road, Cedar Falls. My question, I have many comments I could give, but I guess the question or comment I have is, do you guys have the facts, or the truly facts in front of you to make a decision? Or I've heard a lot of what I would call emotional things about, you know, property looking good, and it sounds like there's a lot of comments on the aesthetic pleasing type things that relate to value, but for this particular issue, that to me is more of an emotional thing than a fact-based thing. And when I hear comments that said, a question of, "Well, how many does this impact?", and really not a true response to that, I guess I could personally question them... I guess I could personally question them. Do you truly have the information you need to make an educated decision on it? Second thing is demographics to me are interesting, too. The reason I'm here is because one of our managers called me and said, "Hey, are you aware of this?" And I said, "No, but I'll be there." And so typically it gets in right or wrong. Typically, it's the older folks that are aware of it and more involved in. And I think of the younger investors and just from a standpoint of, knowing I was at this place before. If I had bought a duplex that had four bedrooms on a side and I put all my savings into this property and did all the right things to keep it looking good, et cetera, et cetera, and it just so happened to have gravel parking spaces, potentially, you know, in the future, I could be reducing my income by 25%. And oh, by the way, you're going to have to put in parking, which could be thousands of dollars. And oh, by the way, if the school thing passes eventually, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, here you have, you know, an investor, an owner, that now is facing something that potentially he may not be able to handle. So to me, there's an element of getting down to what impact does this really have? And looking at the demographics of the people that actually are property owners and having, making sure you guys have those facts and education information to make a decision that to me seems like it could have a pretty profound impact long-term. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Celia Simmer. I live at 3123 Neola. I've lived in Cedar Falls all my life, attended all the public schools here at the University of Northern Iowa, so I'm a lifer. He was asking about some data, and we pulled some data from our MLS to let you know what has happened here, starting with 2010. If we just use the period that the March 1st is going to affect right now, which is usually a good time period for selling property, between the 18th of August through today. In 2010, there were 40, in this price range of $90,000 to $140,000, which is your typical cash flow area for a rental property. In 2010, there were 40 sales in that time period. In 2011, there were 42. In 2012, there were 54. In 2013, there were 47. And this last 2014 time period, there were 27. Houses are sitting on the market. People are scared to death to invest in the city. And we're not talking about trickle-down economics. We're talking about trickle-up economics here. If people can't sell their home in that beginning price range, they're not going to be able to afford to move up to that $250,000, $300,000 price range. If they can't afford to sell that, to buy, sell their house, they can't move up into a nicer home. We have a lot of people who are sitting on the fence and not doing anything right now. It has severely impacted the real estate market and people's values in their homes right now, more so, in my belief, than making these changes will impact, not making these changes would impact the value of your home. Homes are not dropping $10,000. They're dropping $20,000, $30,000 in value in some of these homes or owners can't sell them. I've had several investors that I work with that have four-bedroom properties. Normally, when we get a four-bedroom property that's in the rental code system already and comes on the market, it's gone within days. A lot of times before, it even hits our hot sheet. Right now, they're sitting there. I've had several investors that I work with, I've had them take their houses off the market and put renters back in rather than sitting there through the winter with nobody in them. So it has affected that. We've got, there's a number of nice neighborhoods, Cedar Heights area. Right now, in my neighborhood where I live, there's three houses within a couple blocks of me that are in that price range that are just sitting there that normally should have been gone within days. And they've been there now for several months. So I just want to let you know, so many statistics, there's a few for you. Thank you.
My name is Lynn Nielsen. I live at 2419 Tremont Street. I just want to pick up on a couple of comments that we just heard. Nick mentioned previously the economic impact that this ordinance could have on rental. Something's missing in that statement. It's not that we don't recognize we have rental. But I live on that block also. And the good news and the bad news is that the neighborhood has changed in the 35 years we've lived in that house. And actually, I mean, that's not, that's not an understatement. It's a good thing. But it's been a complete flip. And without it being counterbalanced by enforcement, which I think is the significant foundation to keeping civility in place, just as every teacher knows, and I suspect that in this room with the number of people we have, we've got a lot of either educators or former educators. Every fourth grade teacher will tell you, if you essentially post the rules on day one of the school year and then look at them and never address them, never enforce them, it'll be about day three and the kids are going to figure this out. We can do what we want to on the playground, in the cafeteria, during the spelling. Whatever we're being asked to do, we don't have to do it. Or we can do it in some fashion that is maybe not acceptable. And so I would hope that the effort that's been put into this will be recognized. And also, for those of us that had the advantage or the benefit or I don't know what you want to call it, Frank. It was 4:30 to, or 5:00 to 6:30 or whatever the time was we met. But we had at least two realtors on our committee. We had a landlord that holds significant properties. We had a number of people with vested interest in rental property who repeatedly said, particularly at the beginning of our discussions, "It's market forces. It's market forces. It's market forces." And I'm guessing that much of what we're seeing with the rentals or the properties that are for sale right now can be attributed to market forces as much as the horrible things that the moratorium has brought upon the community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steve Weichert. I live at 110 West 16th Street in Cedar Falls. I spoke a little earlier at the committee meeting. I had a written statement, but I'd just like to kind of make some comments about some things that I've listened to tonight here. First of all, I didn't mention that I lived in my house. Lived in Cedar Falls 37 years, and I've lived in the same house I bought. It's a small bungalow. We have expanded as much as we can. We made an attic into a bedroom, made it a three-bedroom. It's only on a 66 by 66 lot. But we've been on the Cedar Falls Garden two different times in the last decade. We've taken our house, I'm a little insulted by the woman that said that you have to move up to $250,000, $300,000 homes, okay? I love my historic home. I have oak woodwork throughout the house. People that come to my home say it's one of the most neatest houses they've ever seen. Okay? When I moved in, we had one rental in about a four-block area. We probably have about 15 now. Okay? Now, that's how things have changed since I've been 37 years. And, you know, I think that we need to look at, I hear market consequences. I'm hearing the last couple of months, we haven't sold as many rental properties. I would assume that would probably happen when you put up a moratorium go on. We're looking at short-term things. People are talking about short-term things. They're talking about short-term consequences financially, okay? I've lived here for the long term. And that's what this, these policies that you're bringing forth are. They're for the long term. That's what city planning is called, okay? You don't plan for just two months from now. You plan for five years from now. You plan for 10, 20, 30, 40 years from now. And that's what this plan is doing. And I said that at the committee meeting. I said that the decision you make tonight is going to affect generations. It's going to affect things for the decades. Okay? So I, you know, someone else said to me, I think, said that we've already talked about this. You've discussed this. You've had people draw plans for this for over 18 months. Okay? I think you need to take a stand on this. I think you need to vote for this. And that vote is for Cedar Falls and for the community here. Thank you.
Jenny Plummer, 2434 Hawthorne Drive. I just want to clear up a few things. People don't have to move up to a $250,000 house they're choosing to. That's an investment they're taking in their future. As far as the market only stalling in the rentals, not true. Single-family homes, owner-occupied, are stalling, not just rentals. I've heard a lot of people say that they want to keep the city beautiful, keep their neighborhoods beautiful. I was just in a property the other day that has animals living. It's a vacant property. It's a foreclosure owned by a bank in New York. Animals are living in it. Windows are open. Structural issues. No way any single person, family, can buy that home. They don't have the money to put in it to fix it up. And a bank's not going to lend them the money because it won't appraise. It's unsafe. So who's going to buy that property? An investor. Okay? They've got to look at the numbers. It's on a lot that's 66 feet wide, so there's restrictions there. It's a four-bedroom house, three-to-four-bedroom house. As it states right now, we can only put two renters in there. So that drives the price of that property down even farther. That affects home sales in the market six months to a year later. Not rental sales, home sales. Because appraisers use that information with new property sales. They have to use that sale as a comp when they're looking at things. Just wanted to clarify that.
Surprised Steve Morris didn't mention this already, but usually thought is we probably should have a motion on the floor to then discuss. Is that one of your lines you usually use?
Usually.
And I think we should probably have a motion and then we can discuss. So we can put it on our table and do whatever we want with it. But if we have an ordinance that was presented to us and I like to ask if there's a motion to prove it, then we can discuss further that motion.
Okay, we pass an ordinance immediately after the second.
Okay, now discussion, additional discussion, questions, comments? As was pointed out, you could, we could vote on that. If we would, if we prove it tonight, and if someone wants to change, we'd have to start over at the next councilman, in a sense, because we can't change an ordinance once it passes the first reading. We'll take three readings to pass an ordinance. That being said, other comments or questions? So we have a... Yes? Yes?
Just to back up what Jenny said. My stats that I presented to you were not rental houses that were not sold. Those are single-family homes that are not sold. It's people that are afraid to buy that house or they can't get their house sold. I don't know if any of you listen to Amy Williams on her radio show on Saturday mornings, but she made the comment there that they will not even look at an offer from a buyer on one of her properties that is subject to the sale of a house, especially if it's in Cedar Falls. Because there's no guarantee that that house is going to sell right now to a family or an investor. I don't care if it's an investor or a family. It's that price range that we're really affecting by this.
And you're saying that's because of the moratorium?
Yes, I believe that it is. And it was not my intent to insult anybody for not buying a $250,000 house. I don't own a $250,000 house.
So the housing market is selling really rapidly now?
Waterloo houses doesn't seem to have impacted, impacted very much. And it used to be, it used to be when I had a property owner that wanted to buy in that price range and couldn't find it in Cedar Falls, we were able to get them into Waterloo. Now they're choosing a lot of that before they even look at Cedar Falls just because they have a fear that they might not be able to sell it down the road once they buy it.
Other, hey, other comments, questions? Like I say, we have a motion on the floor, so, but go ahead.
Victoria Hurst at 1022 West 22nd Street, apartment 3. I was also the student and renter on the task force. My question for you is, do you think that this ordinance is really doing what the goal of having the ordinance in the first place is intended to do? We're meeting because of what? Bad behavior, not meeting certain standards of what the housing should look like? Which we talked about at the task force. We recommended increased enforcement, you know, stop ignoring things that we shouldn't be ignoring. And I think from what I'm hearing, a lot of people are satisfied with what's come out of that. So then what's left? I think this is being the density issue, as being the only thing, letting this ordinance still be here, because the other problems seem by and large to be resolved by increasing enforcement. So in looking at the density issue, I asked on numerous occasions to consider on-street permit-only parking. And I don't think that that ever actually happened. But I think that that would have been a good potential solution to some of the density issues, because I don't think that it's generally the people living in the properties that are parking up front. But a lot of times, at least where I live, it's students commuting to and from. So if you went to the option of the, you know, on-street permit parking, perhaps you could alleviate some of the density issues that are coming from the commuter traffic. Also, in looking at this ordinance, I look at the negative externalities coming out of it, some of those being decreasing housing values. But you're also looking at this ordinance when we have 11,928 students for a 14,000-student campus. What are you going to do with those 2,000 students once we hit that 14,000 again? Well, for the first time, really, I don't think we actually did hit 14,000 then. So you're decreasing the density of the area, specifically around campus as well, because those are generally 66-foot lots. So decreasing density over time while the student number increases over time. And to me, that seems like what's going to happen is you're just going to flood out from the campus area more students and more rentals. And I don't think that that's what you want. So I'm just wondering if this ordinance is really right and it's really solving problems that it's meant to address.
Hi, I'm Craig Gingrich. I live on Cottage Row. I'm not a big landlord, but I am a dreaded landlord. And I resent, you know, the connotation that landlords have gotten over some of this, some of this controversy. But we have only a couple of houses. My son has some, too. But it's on, like, both of my houses are on gravel alleys. So does that mean that the city's going to put hard surfaces on those alleys? If you're going to force the landowners, the homeowners to put their driveways hard surface to? What is that going to cost? That's what I, you know, somebody talked about, what's it going to cost all these people to concrete all of their parking? And I don't know if anybody's got that answer, but it's a huge answer question for me. It's going to cost me thousands and thousands of dollars. And I was planning on, you know, replacing windows. And now I'm going to be buying concrete instead of replacing windows. But I just retired. My wife just retired. So, you know, I'm worried about what the data shows. And I don't think you guys have near enough data to do something like this. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I'm mayor, council, and city staff. I come before you today with the dreaded L on my forehead. And it's not due to the fact that I got some cream from my dermatologist, it's the fact that I'm a landlord. Rick Morris? I live at 82 West Latteal Trail in Cedar Falls. I have a couple of rentals in Cedar Falls. Got them because my kids are going to school in Cedar Falls. I joked with some of you. Some of you know my family and so forth. So that's why I got them. But I also, Sunday mornings, I'd get that newspaper out, just like some of the realtors have talked. And there's the listings. I'm thinking, hey, maybe that'd be a good one. And I'd take my kids along to see whether or not that would be something that they would live in. And I've been doing it ever since they were little kids, because I thought, you know what, if they're going to live in it someday, some of their friends are going to be living in these properties. And I think I've done a good job, as probably most of the landlords in Cedar Falls have done, to take care of their properties and to make sure there aren't F-bombs and beer cans and everything being thrown around. The other thing that I think is interesting is that most of the people that I get are tired of the F-bombs and the beer cans being thrown around in apartments and in dormitories and all that kind of stuff. They don't want that litter clatter of the people above them or the people below them. They want to live in a house or they want to live in something that approaches a house like a duplex, because that's the way they grew up. They didn't grow up in dormitories. They didn't grow up in apartment complexes for the most part. The vast majority of the students on this campus came from a single-family dwelling, and that's what they aspire to get back to. I've had university personnel. I've had university students. I've had professors. I've had university personnel, I've had university students, I've had professors, I've had pharmacists, I've had everybody from every walk of life. And have I had a bad apple here and there? Pretty much so. If you've been a landlord, that's going to be the situation. But it hasn't had to do with people causing problems and breaking windows. It's, hey, they skipped their rent, or, hey, I've got to come down a little bit hard on them. So one of the things that I thought was interesting as I was listening to the discussion is, and I feel for the man behind me who bought his house 37 years ago. I'm betting, when you were in school, Mayor, 37 years ago, there were probably 3,000 students here, because I was a high school student over in Waterloo, and there were 3,000 to 4,000 students here. And that population base has grown to, you know, 8,000, 9,000, 10,000 more than that, and it aspires to more than what it has now. Where are you going to put those people? Are you going to, you know, some of this downsizing? I bought a house about 18 months ago. It's got, according to the city staff that come out and inspected, to be a rental property, it's got six bedrooms in it. Now, I know I can't put six people in there unless it's a family. But now, all of a sudden, I might not even be able to put four people in there, because the rental ordinance, as I understand it, because it's got a 60-foot lot, and so whatever depth it is, I did a little math, and it's less than 8,000 square feet. So that's going to be one of those properties that I invested in in good faith, based on the laws that were set up by this city. And now, all of a sudden, that game is going to be changed, you know? And so is there going to be some kind of compensation or condemnation committee set up, so that those of us that have invested in good faith and have kept up our properties, and now run the risk of having some of that economic value taken away, because we can't sell them, because you're not going to allow what happened before, unless we jump through something that's going to be created? I kind of liken what's going on a little bit, and don't take offense at this, to Obamacare. I'm wondering how many people have read every little line of this? I got it Friday. I don't know, how long has it been out? Has it been out more than 48 hours? Mayor?
Friday.
The ordinance?
Friday.
Does anybody know when it came out? Is it kind of like Obamacare? Nobody knows when it came out?
Not at all like Obamacare. Came out on Friday.
Came out on Friday. Okay, so it's been out for now 72 hours. For everybody to digest this and understand exactly what's in there and what the ramifications are, with all due respect to my colleague, Mr. Moore, I looked at some of the provisions. The city has a lesser burden to show stuff than the landlords have when it comes to trying to prove things. I think that's a double standard, you know? The city has a preponderance of the evidence to prove something, whereas the landlord has a clear and convincing statute. I don't think that's fair. What's good for the goose should be good for the gander. So I'm not up here to get mad at everybody, I just think everybody should take a look at that and say, is this what you really want? Because are you scaring away the students? Are you scaring away the people that came to this campus in good faith and have wonderful housing options? There's plenty of apartment complexes that don't have the problems. But there also ought to be places where these students can go and enjoy a kind of a lifestyle that they grew up in, and have those opportunities without it causing them an arm and a leg. I've got three kids in college, so I've still got all four pennies right now. So anyway, I'd like you to consider it, you know? I don't know whether I'm for or against it, because there's so many things in there. It's like going down this road, then I've got to divert over here, and then I go down this road, I've got to divert over here, and I go to this road, and I've got to divert over there. I mean, I know what all the possibilities are, but I think it's like a lot of things that get developed. It's a complicated piece of information. Somebody's got the engine going to get this thing passed through, because they don't want to extend the moratorium for six months or something. I'd rather see the moratorium go for another six months, and this really stand the test of time and make sure everybody who's got a stake in this, meaning you council people who are going to vote on this, understand it and feel, hey, this is the best thing. Not just a group, I understand the task force was a group of eight people, and there's only one person on there that's got any single-family rentals. And let's face it, the focus of this is single-family rentals. It's not on apartments, it's not on fourplexes, it's not on anything else. It's not on dormitories or anything like that, you know? It's anybody who's got a single-family house that's trying to rent it out for their students like me, or for other students that are coming to this campus. And let's face it, where are you going to put 10,000 students? They didn't build enough dormitories, there's not enough places to go. And I think it provides a viable option, a viable alternative, and I'm hearing good things from the enforcement of this. So, you know, is it broke? Does it really need fixing to this extent? Or can the enforcement provisions that were set up that should have been done for some period of time, that now apparently have the impetus behind everybody from a city and council standpoint are getting this done? I mean, there's more attention being paid to it. Do we need this kind of heavy-duty lifting with this ordinance that might, you know, kind of fall on a lot of innocent people, you know, like I thought? So thank you for my comments.
Thank you. Okay. Others?
I'm Robin Abraham. I live at 2831 Abraham Drive. Formerly, I lived in the College Hill neighborhood. I was a single mom. I bought my house there because it was affordable housing, and my kids went to the lab school. I basically have the same story to tell as Tony Reed and Steve Wykert about the trouble with the neighbors, the issues with having renters. It's not just that they're renters and that some of them are students, it's the extra traffic that goes with that. It's the extra, there's a lot of cars parked in there, even if there's off-street parking for the people who live there. Everybody's got friends and boyfriends and parties and everything else. Overall, what I've heard people who are for this ordinance say is it is a quality of life issue for them. A quality for their family, a quality for their neighbors, their kids, the city, they want the city to look good. They don't want their neighborhoods to fall to pieces. We, I know all of us probably know neighborhoods or have lived in them that have just fallen apart over the years, because a single-family housing came open, it was sold and went to rental. Somebody said how normally these smaller houses would sell within the first couple days. Well, of course they would. They were sold to investors, and those properties became rentals. So reiterating, I hear the people who are for this ordinance talk about quality of life. I hear the people who are against it, it seems like they're concerned about the economic impact on themselves, on other investors, just kind of thinking for themselves, and not how it affects the city as a whole. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to either address or ask a question or comment? Back to the council, any questions, comments maybe you have?
I have some comments. I keep hearing the term "market forces," and I have a master's degree from U of N, and I believe very strongly in the free enterprise system. So I was extremely surprised when I got to researching the term "character of neighborhood" and found out that it's a concept that's been tested and proven to represent people who are underrepresented. There are a large number of homemakers, homeowners in Cedar Falls that aren't here tonight. They bought their homes and they bought them in neighborhoods, in new development areas, that were protected by covenants. And those covenants said specifically where rental units were going. And they were very happy with it. Those covenants have now expired, and so I hear from those people. And they're worried that if their neighbor's house goes up in their neighborhood, which most likely is a three-bedroom with a double garage, it fits very appropriately to have a landlord come in, buy it, convert the basement to rental rooms, put in egress windows, and make more money by doing that. And a single-family owner can afford to pay for the home, they can pay more. And so they're very concerned that their neighborhood is going to be affected by this. And it's been tested in the court alone now. So they're concerned that we need to do something to protect their neighborhoods. And so I'm seeing a group of people that have contacted me that aren't sitting in this audience, except I saw one or two heads shake their heads yes. This will keep going. If the market values go unchecked and we don't recognize character of neighborhoods are important to people who bought their homes in Cedar Falls in areas that were previously protected. It's another group that needs to be heard tonight, and that's why I'm bringing it up. Thank you. Oh, one other thing. Stephanie has an excellent PowerPoint presentation. I hope that it's on the web, so people can research her summary, get a better understanding of this complex ordinance, because it does summarize it very well. Thank you, Mayor.
Others on the table up here? Any questions or comments with that market?
First of all, thank you, everybody, for being involved. Terrific to hear everybody's opinion, whether, you know, you agree or not with your neighbors. This is city government, terrific. Just a couple of things I wanted to touch on. It was brought up earlier about city staff, and I haven't always agreed with city staff. Some of you have seen that and you're not, but in this regard, we formed a task force. Frank and that task force met for better than six months, back and forth on all of these topics. Tonight, just in committee, we reviewed this ahead of, which wasn't actually called for, it could have just come to the council to vote on this. We reviewed it once again, make sure that the details were outlined. I don't see city staff trying to keep anything away from the public or try and pass anything even close to Obamacare. This is local government. And from what I've found in being on the council is that staff is more than willing to explain the need for everything and why it's there, whether you agree with it or not. They're looking at this on a citywide basis and trying to be fair. This has to be a compromise. That's what Dick and the rest of staff were asked to do by the task force, because an agreement couldn't be met. It was back and forth, isn't it? In my current frame, we asked staff to look at this. And what they've come back with is not perfect in any way, shape, or form, and there's going to be effects from it all the way around. But it's not a four-to-three drop in what you can do with your rental property either. So it could have been just to be the one paragraph, and I agree that the wording is Steve Moore, and it needs to be. He's very good at putting this stuff together to make sure that all of the bases are covered. It's confusing, but I urge you to, as Dave mentioned, check out the PowerPoint Stephanie's got. Call Dick McAllister and ask him about your specific details. They understand how this is going to work and how it can work, and if there are situations that need to be reviewed, I have the utmost faith that they're going to be reviewed and not looked at by, Dick is the one trying to push this throughout the city. Dick did what he did because the task force asked him to do this, and there wasn't an agreement that could be met. So it's not pretty, it's not perfect, but it's a compromise. And I, in trying to be fair on both sides of the spectrum, Mr. Reed, I see your point of view, I see any landlord's view out there as well. But when you look at even just the basic numbers of some of this stuff, I think there are probably 100 great, quality landlords that respect their neighbors and respect their properties and the city in general, and want to keep things kept up to make sure that their property value stays up. You take one aspect of this, and this is only one aspect, and I get that, but of 238 properties that were inspected since September, 86 of them have uncaved parking lots. That is a code that is on the books right now that is not being met. So 86 gravel parking lots should have concrete on them. So I think there are a fair amount of people out there that aren't abiding by our codes. So myself, I think this is necessary. I think it's been necessary for a while, longer than I've been around, from what, when you look at the changes that have happened in this community. I think some aspects may be overreaching, but I think it's a compromise that staff was asked to make. And again, for everybody coming out and speaking tonight, thank you very much.
Susan, you have a question or a comment?
Well, this is really about nurturing our community to help build a better tomorrow. Code enforcement alone can't do it all. And I really want to thank all the task force members for all their hard work on this, to help make the compromise, try to make the best situation we can to help the community move forward.
I just want to mention a couple predictions, because I kind of sense where this is going. Okay, so in Cedar Falls, we're going to have supply restriction. Okay? That amounts to increased rents. That sends a signal to the market to bring more rentals onto the market. The rentals proliferate. We come back to the table and we ask, what did we just do? Okay? So I don't think that this is over. I think that, you know, as much as we want to, we try to control the market, and the market has an interesting way of responding, and it's going to happen in all forms of unintended consequences. So that's my prediction. Supply restricts, prices go up, students suffer, young professionals suffer, we stop attracting new professionals, new students to this community, the market responds, rentals proliferate, and we scratch our heads and say, boy, should have listened in economics class. That's my prediction. Thank you.
I've got to say something. People use my name several times, so I will allow that. I want to thank Victoria and Lynn Nielsen, who is here, Miss Wynn, who's still here, Freddie Abraham hiding back there, anyone else, and Black Prince Gray, five of the eight people who did this very thing twice a month for seven months. And you can see that despite all of their good intentions and hard work, we still have not perfected what we were after. We went into this, I believe, I went into it anyway, with a goal of responding to some real concerns that neighbors had about the plight of their neighborhoods. And recognizing that we wanted to help those people, as well as maybe prevent that same kind of thing from happening in other parts of their community. And that was our intent, and I think everybody on the task force agreed with that intent. I think everybody on the task force agreed there were issues. But how to resolve those issues, I called it my sausage-making committee. It's one of those things where you maybe like the end product, but you don't want to see it made. And we're still in that place, I believe, because I've heard enough tonight to kind of agree that, I don't know that we have all of the information. I believe we need to, I believe we need to have an ordinance, and I believe in this ordinance. But I think we still have to allow some additional communication, and I think that can be built in, whether we delay the vote or vote on it tonight. I've been lobbying for ongoing, more often than six months, dialogue about what is the impact of this. But we've got to do something. My concern is, and this is another quote that I've kind of lived with since we started this, is that I feel like maybe we're using a chainsaw where we should be using a scalpel. There are some real subtle kinds of things, if we could just isolate, we could fix it. But instead, as cities have a tendency, we seem to have to use an entire ordinance to make these things happen. The ordinance is in front of us, we've got to move forward. My recommendation is that we prolong the moratorium for a few more weeks, invite some of you in, not necessarily the task force again, but other stakeholders, and to talk in terms of, are there other things, more subtle things that we can do to make this work? That would be my choice. However, you know, the council has to decide what we're going to do. If it moves forward, I would still encourage all of you to stay involved, because it is a, I think it is a work in progress. We're making decisions, kind of flying blind right now, and I don't want to say if we pass a law, thank God we're going to live with it. If it's not working, we need to make sure it does work. So again, I want to thank all of you for participating, and task force members in particular. We may be meeting again.
Clear motion on the table? Yes, there is. So I assume, I asked for a couple comments, and the council also would require, we'll call it for a first reading.
Hi, voting on, two voting no, Mr. Mayor.
So that'll be on the agenda for next week. As I said, we cannot, you could amend and start over, but you can't pass, change anything next week without starting over for the first reading. So it'll be a second reading for this ordinance, or starting over would have some difference. So that passes, the first reading, five to two. It's on the agenda for next two weeks from tonight.
Mayor?
Yes.
You just said it could be amended?
Well, you cannot amend, you cannot amend... Well, you cannot amend it and change it next week. You could... If you amend it, you have to start over. You could make changes next two weeks and start over at the first reading, but you can't just make changes for a second reading. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So, I'll wait about two or three minutes. You guys have to say the rest is active. Thank you. It was special order of business. Public hearing proposed amendments to Chapter 29, zoning codes as relative to driveways and residential parking. You want to briefly... We've talked about this before, but before we start the hearing?
Sure. If you'd like, I can go over just a couple points of the different ordinance amendments.
This was approved, and we've talked about it before. It's somewhat related. Some of the things we just did, this is partially related, that way.
Correct. So, what you have in front of you for a public hearing is first reading is an ordinance to make some amendments to the zoning ordinance that do start to set some criteria on driveways in particular, and what a driveway can be used for, and is for access, and then extensions of that and expansions, and when it would need to be paved or not. So, there's some provisions about driveways, as well as definitions for what hard surface involves, and required yards, trying to make a distinction between what is generally viewed as a front yard versus what's required for a front yard stepback. And that distinction, or making that definition is important, because what the ordinance is proposing is eliminating any front yard parking. No parking lots, parking areas in a front yard for residential properties. So, that's why that definition is important. I can go over, I guess, any other points of that ordinance if you would like. As the mayor mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. Came forward through them in two separate kind of pieces. One was the driveway criteria, the definitions, and residential parking on the front yard aspect. And that vote was a 6-1 vote. And then, the other item in front of you includes some changes to the parking ratios that introduces a requirement for rental properties to have, in addition to what a single-family has, is two stalls for a property, that a rental be based on the number of bedrooms, basically providing a parking stall for each bedroom that's there. So, it introduces that, along with, in the committee discussion two weeks ago, talking about how if you start to get into a duplex and above, then it's a visitor parking stall that gets added on to that as well in the rental case. So, with that, I think I'll end there. The Planning and Zoning Commission vote on the parking aspect on the 5-2 vote, and then I can answer any questions that you have.
Okay. With that said, so, public hearing in this issue, first of all, receiving file approved, no super hearings.
Hold on.
Moving to second, receiving file approved, out of public, January 12. All favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Pose name, motion carries. Any written objections? Follow the city clerk.
I have no written objections, so I'll follow, Mr. Mayor.
Oral comments tonight? Written, I mean, oral comments, probably going to say these are questions or comments.
I wanted to discuss a potential edit on the 12, 12A and 12B. That's a description of the parking that is required for duplex. My understanding, watching the planning and zoning videotape, the intent was to copy from the overlay and replicate throughout the city what was working in the overlay. And that is specifically, a visitor spot is introduced after you have five units on a property. And what they're doing here is coming down to saying a visitor spot is needed for every duplex. So, if you look at the composition of the neighborhoods right next to the campus, there's a lot of duplexes. So, now you're saying all these duplexes need a visitor spot, and many of them barely have enough to have off-street parking anyway. So, what's going to happen to accommodate a visitor spot, you're going to have to have an empty bedroom, a bedroom vacated, so that this parking, which was four and four, now is four and three, let's say. So, now, a student that wants to live right next to campus loses a bedroom opportunity. And the remaining three people are going to have to pay higher utility bills to live on this property. Now, there was also talk during the task force meeting about having bans around the campus and different types of zoning was coming down the road, which I understand still is. But it's not here yet, so I have three duplexes... Let's see. Four duplexes within a block of campus that, under this, I'm going to lose a bedroom. I'm going to lose the opportunity for a tenant to live in as a student that may not even have a car, because probably 10% of my students walk to school and they don't have a vehicle. So, in this process that's coming apparently soon, I'm hearing, we should look at high-density next to campus, not have to have a bedroom or a parking spot for every bedroom, and accommodate people that walk and don't have a vehicle. Because the US Census for each year points out there is a percentage of the population that doesn't have a vehicle, 5%, 7%, whatever it might be. And none of this incorporates anywhere those types of people. And it was actually mentioned in the Ames case, where they recognized that student professors, junior professors, teaching assistants, and students live close to campus, and they don't want to have a car, because they want to be frugal, or they have to be frugal, as you've heard some of the students say here. So, you're not accommodating that. You're making it worse by adding that criteria for a duplex to have a visitor spot. Now, if you want to do it... Now, I know this is R1 and R2, I believe. I don't know if it's R3 and 4. Wait, can I throw in a question quick?
Or any rental. This definition apply. Any rental.
Okay. So, you're adding a requirement that would be beneficial in the... Should I call it the bedroom community of the city? But when you get right close to campus where you want the students to congregate, you should make it less restrictive for them to park off-street or have resident-only parking, like we've mentioned before. And incidentally, in that regard, the communities that have it, the college towns that have it, each neighborhood, each block can vote to decide if their block wants to be resident-only or not. So, it's not pushed upon any neighborhood. They can pick and choose as each block or half a block, there's a criteria they use. But in the overlay right now, the language says for every five dwelling units on a property, one additional parking stall is required, visitor parking stall. And that's 29-160E1C for clarification. So, it would seem appropriate to either define something differently next to campus where you want the density of the students and not push them out into the community, because now you're saying all these duplexes, which I venture to say maybe a third of the units next to campus are duplexes, or a fourth or some number, quite a few, you're going to push out a student and have an empty bedroom to make a visitor spot. And that's an unintended consequence. So, I would ask a edit, or whatever the procedure is, on this particular sentence here, to say for every five dwelling units, which is what's in the overlay. That's what's in the overlay right now.
So, I'll make a motion to amend the current ordinance to one visitor spot for every five units versus the current duplex requirement.
That copies the really language.
We have to... We have to... Sorry. Motion.
Does that make sense, what I'm describing to people?
The other problem with that is, this applies to single-family dwelling rental units, two-family dwelling units. They're never going to have five units on a property. So, basically, what you're saying is you're removing, or you want to propose to remove the visitor stall from anything that is under a fiveplex. Just want to make sure you understand what the import of that change is.
Because that's what the overlay is right now.
Yeah. I'm just... This applies more widely than the overlay. I would just say, isn't that right, Stephanie?
Watching the explanation to the questions that the P&amp;Z had, they were told, and I could watch the video again, that they were replicating what's in the overlay now to the rest of the city. And in the overlay, it's every five units. That's what I understood. So, it's...
We have a more term here. Is there a reason we couldn't check on that and review that with Steve and Stephanie before we voted on?
Because it's still including multifamily dwellings, condos, apartments. If that two-family wording has to go up to the 12A, dwelling, single-family, and two-family, you then require all of the duplexes to have one stall per bedroom. And you still get then, if you want multiplexes to have a visitor for two, that's quite a jump, even for the multiplexes to add a visitor for every two. Something, the numbers seem to have pretty major unintended consequences, especially for students. Because you want the students by the campus, but yet this language will push out and require more visitor stalls. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments at public hearing stage?
Sorry, I missed the initial conversation. Keeshment, 7844 Biggles Road. I guess the question I have is, because we're actually, the city is trying to buy some of our parking lot to do some expansion with the Drayron Creek. And to me, when I read some of this verbiage, not only does it impact my opportunity to increase parking spaces, but now to add the visitor provisions into here later on, I see this as long-term investment. Yet, when I go to sell this, if basically I can't provide those visiting parkings, that means the number of units that legally can sell goes down by a pretty large percentage. And so, from a multi-unit standpoint, this, to me, has a pretty severe impact, not only potentially now what I have, but for surely later on. So, if there's a question there, maybe I don't fully understand, but to me, the multi-unit thing seems pretty impactful.
It might help to explain, if the government takes your property, then you'll become a legal, not a form of use, and you shouldn't end up being harmed. So, in other words, you'd be made whole, as if you had to add up a parking there throughout the time in which anyone owns that property, if the government's taking your property through an acquisition, to bring you in conflict with the ordinance.
Well, it hasn't arrived yet. It's not arriving.
Ask for it with the purchase, when we purchase it.
Other comments at public hearing stage? First of all, before we... Okay. Hearing, no more. If you're opposed, consider the ordinance, or obviously, some questions have been raised. So, I guess I'll defer to Stephanie here. Do we need to have a resolution on the floor first, or a motion on the floor? Okay. Have we should have an ordinance or a motion to pass, and you could amend or have it looked at before we vote? Is there a timing thing here? This is the number?
Well, yes, we are trying to bring this through before the moratorium is up. We feel that the driveway, the paving, and the parking elements are important to the carrying capacity of a property and setting the tone of the neighborhood. So, we would be looking for these amendments to make it through.
Okay. So, do you have a comment to this question or not?
It certainly is a possibility to make it consistent with the College Hill overlay at this point. I guess, keeping in mind that we've already made the change that a rental would need to have one per bedroom, so that is, I guess, technically, an increase over where it is today. And so, then, the visitor is then another aspect, understanding that there are visitors that come and go and trying to accommodate those makes sense. But the rate at which that should be done, you know, can be discussed, so...
We were just talking, I think probably the best if we just continue the community of the public hearing, or table either one of them. We'll bring back the correct language at the next meeting.
Please review.
That way, you're not guessing what the language is. We'll bring it back to you accurately.
Okay. So, just to be clear, I think that we're trying to gather consensus whether or not we want to reduce the visitor parking requirements specifically on duplexes, but it seems to me like the overlay says five and below are fine, right? And I'm okay with that, too. The street is a viable parking option in my mind for visitors.
You say require a motion to continue the hearing?
It wouldn't be a bad idea. I second that.
Okay. I will continue.
We're the second continuing hearing, and we've got some... Look at those questions. All favor continuing hearing. Chat? Pose name, motion carries? Okay. Hearing's continue that issue, and can you get in writing what you... I mean, maybe you've already got that writing, or you... What's a Stephanie?
I think we know what you mean.
Yeah, we'll get it.
All right. All right. The next one is...